Okay, K L E K one two point five FM. It's about a couple of minutes before the top of the nine o'clock hour. We will be going live right at the top of the hour with our Jonesboro City Council Ward six position two debate. We have both of the candidates in studio, David McLean, the incumbent and Larry Hager, the challenger. So just stand by, go ahead and share this video if you're watching on our Facebook live feed. And join the discussion because in our second segment, you will get to ask the candidates questions. Stay tuned, this is K L E K one two point five FM.
Broadcasting from the first national bank tower. This is K L E K L P Jonesboro. The voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council.
Jonesboro's community radio station, your life, your music. K L E K one oh two point five FM.
Good Monday morning, Jonesboro, and happy Columbus Day. This is me, your artist, Tim Root, with your K L E K one to two point five forecast. On this Columbus Day, it'll be mostly sunny, temperatures around eighty, and south winds about ten, twelve miles per hour. Northwest winds tonight about ten miles per hour, mostly clear in the low fifties. Tuesday and Wednesday, dry weather, sunny weather, pleasant weather in the mid to upper seventies each afternoon. Maybe some showers coming into play by Thursday. Jonesboro, that's your K L E K one to two point five FM weather.
From Feature Story News in London, I'm Ollie Barrett. Armenia and Azerbaijan are accusing each other of fresh violations of the ceasefire brokered by Russia over the weekend. India's total of confirmed coronavirus cases has crossed the seven million mark. The nine million population of the Chinese city of Qingdao is to be COVID nineteen tested over five days. And a new tiered local lockdown system will be announced later by UK Prime Minister Boris Johnson.
It's nine oh one.
K L E K L P Jonesboro, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council. It's now time for Community Conversations, a program focusing on the people working to make the Jonesboro community a better place, while offering viewpoints from all sides of the issues. The views expressed in this program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect the views of K L E K one oh two point five FM, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council, or our underwriters or sponsors.
K L E K one oh two point five FM. Good morning to you on your Monday, Mr. Hager, can you hear me through your headphones?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good morning to you on your Monday, it's October twelfth, twenty twenty. This is our Jonesboro City Council Ward six position two debate. We have both of the candidates in the studio, David McLean, the incumbent and the challenger. Larry Hager, of course, got to start with the disclaimer, K L E K and the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council. We do not endorse, support, or impose any candidate for office. These interviews are provided for informational purposes only, but we do encourage you to exercise your right to vote. Election day is November third, early voting starts October nineteenth. If you have concerns about COVID nineteen, you can still request your absentee ballot, but drop it off at the clerk's office as soon as you can. Preferably, you can mail it back, but if I were you, I would just go ahead and drop it back off. Alright, so for those of you who are new to our debate structure, this is how it works. So we will have each of the candidates give a two-minute opening statement, and we'll do a coin toss in just a second. Then our first official segment will be questions that Quabila and I will ask of the candidates. We've got about, I think, three to four questions, depending on the time, how many of those we'll get to. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to that question. And then on our second segment, in which you, the listeners and the viewers, can weigh in, and you can call us at eight seven zero two seven seven one zero eight zero, or you can leave your questions that come on our Facebook live feed. You can ask a question of the candidates, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question. Then our third segment, the candidates will get to ask a question of each other, and the person who is being asked the question will get two minutes to respond, and then the person answering the question will get a two-minute rebuttal. And then after that, each candidate has to say something positive about their opponent, followed by our closing statement. So that is how this is going to work today. We definitely thank both of you for stopping in the studio today. So let me get my coin toss app. Mr. McLean is the incumbent, you want heads or tails?
Heads.
Alright, we'll flip it. Oh, last hotel, so Mr. Hager, you will start first with your opening statement. You now have two minutes.
I'm Larry Hager, I grew up and went to school in Tuckerman. And I moved over to Jonesboro and attended ASU for four years. And left Jonesboro at that time, and I pursued a career in sales. I've been in sales most of my adult life. Then I moved back to stay here in Jonesboro in late ninety-six. And I'm running for city council, Ward six, position two. If I'm elected to council, the main thing I'll be interested in and working on will be making sure the police and fire departments are fully funded. I want our streets repaired and kept in good repair. I want our roadway right of ways mowed and upkept, which they haven't been in a long time in parts of the town, especially the side of town I live on. I think we need to clean our town up. If we want new business and new businesses to come to town, we got to have an attractive place for them to come. I would appreciate each and every one of your votes. Thank you.
Alright, and, sorry. Alright, and Mr. McLean, you now have two minutes.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Leganzy, and for everybody listening, we appreciate it. My name is David McLean, I'm running for reelection. I'm the ultimate for Ward six, position two. And I'm here running for reelection for the same reasons I ran for election in twenty sixteen. That's to improve our quality of life, that's to improve our connectivity here in our city. So improving our sidewalks, improving our streets, things of that nature. Complete streets that will, number one, help us alleviate traffic, they'll help us to be a more connected community. And also supporting our first responders, we've invested in our first responders, so I want to continue to do that for the next four years. And to also make Jonesboro a better place for all the citizens, families like mine, and also families that are not like mine. I work at Arkansas State, I've worked there the last almost ten years, and work in the development world. So I get to visit with alumni who have left a state and left Jonesboro. And one of the reoccurring things I hear is that they felt like they couldn't connect with Jonesboro. And so get an opportunity to visit with a lot of people and hear their stories and hear what they have to say and how they would like to see us improve. So I'm running for reelection for that. Since my time, we've improved a lot of items here in Jonesboro. We've improved the beautification, we've improved our infrastructure, our public infrastructure, our sidewalks, and we've also invested in our first responders. So I would appreciate everybody's vote and look forward to serving another four years.
Alright, thank you. I would thank you, Mr. McLean, and we're going to now go to Quabila. And Quabila is going to ask our first question of the candidates, and also she will let us know which candidate she wants to start first.
Good morning, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes, good morning.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with this one. We talk about quality of life a lot. Quality of life looks different for everyone. Being healthy in mind, body, and soul can be beneficial for a community, for everyone in any socioeconomic status. What are some projects you would advocate for, for your ward, that could be beneficial to the city as a whole? For example, utilizing green spaces as community gardens, you know, for flower gardens, vegetable gardens, or even just an activity space. So we'll start with Mr. Hager.
Oh, give me just a second to get the clock, let me get the clock plug back up, I have to switch these inputs over.
I'm sorry, I'm right-handed, so that's how I'm going.
Oh, it's fine, okay. Alright, so Mr. Hager, you will now have two minutes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And you're exactly right on the, what you're talking about, the quality of life is different for different people. Matter of fact, quality of life means many different things for many different people. Most of the candidates lately are using quality of life issues as parks, water parks, any kind of parks. That's fine, but quality of life to me is having a safe and secure place to live. That's why our police and fire departments needs to be fully funded. In my opinion, they haven't been fully funded in years. And it's for his equipment and salaries and a whole deal. But anyway, my quality of life is funding, fully funding the fire and police departments. It's also keeping all of our streets in repair, in good repair. There's potholes all over town. It's keeping the roadways, the right of ways along the roads mowed and maintained, which they haven't done in years. We've got drainage ditches stopped up all over town. There's a drainage ditch down where, close to where me and Mr. McLean live. It's within less than a quarter of a mile from both of us. There's trees and brush grown up in that ditch, tall as my head. There's no way it can drain, it drains right into Myrtle Creek, or it's supposed to drain into Myrtle Creek. But things like that is what is quality of life to me. If we want to attract new businesses and new people to town, our town needs to look like it should when these people drive around and look at it. Thank you.
We will now go to Mr. McLean, you now have two minutes.
Alright, thank you, Quabila, for that question. I addressed something real quick, so quality of life doesn't include a water park. We're talking, when we talk about quality of life, what we're looking at, we have to understand that we have to invest in things like our public infrastructure. We have to invest in things that trails, things of that nature, that will work as economic development for us, for our city in the long run. We have to make our city beautiful, we have to make our city look better. And one thing that Quabila, you asked the question, what would I do to encourage green spaces? Well, we've already passed legislation to encourage green spaces within, number one, multifamily, but also in our commercial areas. We've already passed things to require a certain amount of green space, a certain amount of tree preservation, things of that nature that will make our city look better and will enhance the look and feel of our city for years to come. And when someone comes to town, they not only want to see a clean, vibrant city, but they also want to have opportunities to go outdoors and exercise, connect with their community, feel a part of their community, feel a part of their neighborhood. And that's something that we've done, not only with the landscaping, but also with the sidewalk ordinance, requiring sidewalks to be in neighborhoods as well as in commercial spaces.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. To the caller, we are not taking calls during this segment, please call back during our next segment. We will let you know when you can take the opportunity to call for the questions directly to the candidates. We're going to go now back to Quabila, who will now ask our next question.
Alright, so the next question is, we know that we live in a unique time and space right now. Mostly everything is virtual. And so what are some ways that you would try to stay in contact with the residents of your ward to keep them informed on what's coming up on the agenda, so that they have adequate time to get their thoughts together and voice their opinions before the item is voted on?
And who's starting?
Mr. McLean.
Alright, Mr. McLean, two minutes.
So something I'm proud of that I've done since being on the council is actually hosting, hosting something I call Coffee with a Councilman, where I actually give people an opportunity to come meet me in person, get a chance to shake my hand, make, voice any concerns that they have. I've been very active with that on my Facebook page. And also getting out in the community, knocking on doors, saying hey to everyone. We have had ward meetings, we have not had them within the last year or so. But that's something I will continue to do, something I've made a pledge to do, and something I'll continue to work on. In fact, right now, everything is virtual because of COVID nineteen, and so we're not having big meetings. But at the same time, something I, like I said, I'll continue to do is to have people meet with me. But also, if someone wants it right now, the city of Jonesboro does a great job of putting information on the city of Jonesboro website, but then also on their Facebook page. So anytime a meeting goes live, or anytime the agenda is posted, all that stuff is made public. And if someone wants to go and watch a meeting, they can, they can go on and see every time that there is a meeting.
Mr. Hager, you now have two minutes.
What was the question again?
Quabila, could you ask a question again?
What are some ways that you would work to keep the residents of your ward informed of the items on the agenda, so that they have time to voice their concerns before the item is voted on?
I've been talking about this issue ever since the campaign started. I will have an open forum page on Facebook and invite all the residents of Jonesboro, not just my ward, but all the residents of Jonesboro, to stay in touch with me on there. And I will be posting before every council meeting what the agenda is going to be and what items will be voted on. I'll be asking for input from everyone to help us make the correct decision. And as far as Mr. McLean said, he likes to get out and knock doors. He's never knocked on my door or any of my neighbors that I know of.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, Quabila, the both candidates.
Or this is what are?
Start over, start over. Start over, I didn't have the mic on, Mr. Hager didn't catch it.
Okay, whoever is elected come January, what is the first ordinance or resolution you would put forth to be voted on by the council?
And who are we starting with?
Oh, sorry, going back to my right again, Mr. Hager.
The first ordinance I would work on would be, I would try to get, I would try to help Bobby Long get his proposal passed. He's been wanting to send a resolution, get all the council to approve a resolution to send to the governor, asking the governor to relinquish control back to the city leaders here. And like it's been, the governor's been telling us, putting all these mandates on us, and the city council and the mayor's just sit here and let everything go on. There's actually a lawsuit from some other people in the state against the health department and the mayor, and the health department in the state to stop these mandates. That's what I would work on. I don't know why the council hadn't already joined in with Bobby to try to get this done. But Mr. McLean might be able to enlighten us on that.
Mr. McLean, you now have two minutes to respond.
Alright, so be real clear, real quick. Number one, no resolution has come before the city council. So when that does come, we will address it then. The resolution that you're speaking of will be addressed next week at the Public Safety Meeting. But one thing that I would do, Quabila, I would make sure that, I would like to see us include green spaces in neighborhoods, in any new neighborhoods, I would like to see us include those trails in the neighborhood and require a certain amount of green space that could go towards a park. I think those are some things that would actually enhance neighborhoods and enhance the family's experience in those different neighborhoods. Those are some things that are starting to take place within cities like Marion, Arkansas, where they're actually in the process of requiring those things. And so I think that's something that would be beneficial to our city for the long term.
Alright, we will now go to Quabila for our next question.
Okay, so we know there's been talks about finding ways to retain individuals, especially from Arkansas State University, to get them to work and raise their families here. Well, sometimes we might need to start a little younger on the high school level to get them interested in city government as a whole. So what are some ways that you all would work, whoever's elected, that you all would work to engage with the youth of the community? Maybe have them as interns or work on special projects? What are the cases maybe?
Okay, so the question is, how would you get the youth involved in the community of Jonesboro? Who are we starting with? Alright, we start with Mr. McLean, you now have two minutes.
So I think one of the great ways to get kids involved in being a part of what we're doing is to, number one, go to them and ask, what are some things that you would like to have your city government do? What are some things that you would like to see us work on and see us invest in in order for you to have opportunities to be connected and to feel a part of the city? Right now, we've recent, well, I'll say for myself that a couple of, a few guys and I, we have some mentoring programs that we are involved in. But we do that to connect with the community, and then we also spend time and try and educate them on things going on. Now, they're younger than high schoolers, but at the same time, I think we have to start somewhere and give them opportunities to voice their concern, their opinions. And do we have an internship program? Absolutely, I think the city should do something along those lines. But then also, the city should look to get college students, high school students, all of them involved. But one thing that I believe we got to invest in, Quabila, is to make sure that we are investing in projects for these kids to be a part of, and invest in things that not only do they have a say in, but we give them something to do. I've had a conversation recently with one of our deputy prosecuting attorneys, and she's telling me the young folks are the ones she's having trouble with. So I think we got to give them something to do, and we got to give them opportunities to voice what they would like to see.
Alright, and we will now go to Mr. Hager, who will have two minutes.
Yes, I think that's a great idea, to get the young people involved. We've got to invite them to council meetings, to committee meetings, and let them shadow the groups and see exactly how the government works. And we need to maybe visit the schools and talk with the teachers and see if they can help us get the students involved. But I think it's a great idea.
And we thank you for that. And so our last question of the segment, I will ask this question myself, let me get this clock reset. So my question is, and we'll start with Mr. Hager, is if the city got a grant for one million dollars that was unrestricted, it could be spent on anything, what would you spend that one million dollars on? Mr. Hager, your two minutes starts now.
First thing I would spend it on would be repairing the potholes in the streets. I know a million dollars is not going to resurface a lot of roads, but we could repair all the potholes maybe with that. And if there's any money left over, buy some needed equipment that the police department needs.
And Mr. McLean, you now have two minutes.
Yes, a great question, Leganzy, I appreciate it. And I think that if, in order to make a great decision, make a good choice, I think that we have to sit down with the department heads in the city and say, okay, what are some needs? Similar to we'd go through the budget process, what are some needs, what are some wants? And then from there, I think we go and make a decision. Of course, I think we have to continue to invest in our law enforcement and any of our first responders. But then also look at how can we leverage the same million dollars? How can I leverage that to increase support for different projects that we have throughout the city? I think you could take a portion of that and match, hopefully, an opportunity to look at, you know, again, making our quality of life and making projects that go along with it.
Alright, we thank you for that response. And that concludes this segment of our debate. We want to definitely thank both candidates for their civility and their candor. We're going to get ready to go into a break. When we come back from the break, we are going to hear from you. The audience watching on Facebook, we had a call earlier, I believe it came from Roger Kidd on our Facebook live. Roger, if you could just go ahead, since you're on the Facebook live, post it in the comments, and that'll kind of make things a little bit easier. But when we come back from break, we are going to hear from you that are watching on our live feed. So stay with us, don't go anywhere, back in a couple minutes. This is K L E K one two point five FM.
You're listening to Community Conversations on K L E K one oh two point five FM. We'll be right back.
Does your son have the answers he needs to succeed in life? I'm Mark Merrill with today's Family Minute. Growing up, your son will ask some significant questions. Instead of allowing the world to provide answers, it's up to you to give your son the truth. Here are three questions your son will ask himself and how you can answer. First, he'll ask, what's my purpose? Your job is to identify his gifts and guide him toward the answer. Second, your son will ask, do I have what it takes? You can answer this question with affirmation and a resounding yes. Finally, your son will ask, am I a man? The best way to answer this question is by modeling manliness, showing him and telling him what it means to be a man. Remember, your The best way to answer this question is by modeling manliness, showing him and telling him what it means to be a man. Remember, your family first.
Want to keep up with Mark off the air? You can. Follow him on Twitter, twitter.com/markmerrill.
Made possible by the Kappa Nu Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, a nonprofit organization committed to service to all mankind.
Brought to you by the Jonesboro Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated, dedicated to the purpose of achievement. JonesboroAlumni@gmail.com, Jonesboro AR Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity on Facebook and Jonesboro underscore Kappa's on Instagram.
Support for KLEK is brought to you by.
Years ago, Gail decided she would help me out by mowing the yard with our new lawn mower. I came home, the mower's in the front yard, running. The hoodie came down, V-shaped, lodged in the ground. Gail and Todd came out of the house, two little pine trees had been run over. I touched the mailbox, it fell over. Gail said, I stood it back up. Todd was small and been riding on the mower with her. He said, I just want it off. Glenn's saying, and God bless our troops.
KLEK thanks Scott Young and Andy's Storage and Rentals LLC for helping us serve the Jonesboro community by providing a Go Mini Storage Trailer. Andy's offers storage units, storage and moving containers. Details 870-897-7999.
It's me, your heart. High blood pressure is serious and I can quit whenever I want. Just treat me better. After all, we're in this together.
Get your high blood pressure to a healthy range. Visit heart.org slash bloodpressure. From the American Heart Association and the Ad Council.
KLEK thanks the staff of Life Strategies Counseling Incorporated for helping people through hard times in life such as depression, family issues, stress, abuse and more. They offer counseling and therapy for all ages, individuals, families and groups. They are located at 1217 Stone Street. Phone number 1-866-972-1268 or online at LSCIhelp.com.
Arkansas Early Learning prepares children up to five years old for kindergarten by offering a secure learning environment. Qualified teachers at several locations in northeast Arkansas at no cost. Applications are available at AREarlyLearning.org.
Arkansas Early Learning is a nonprofit organization.
And now back to Community Conversations on KLEK 102.5 FM.
And we're back on Community Conversation on KLEK 102.5 FM. Our Ward Six, Position Two debate, this is our second segment, and this is the segment in which you get to ask questions of the candidates. You can do so by either giving us a call at 870-277-1080 or leaving your questions or comments in the Facebook Live feed. And we do have somebody on the phone now. So caller, you're on the air. This is KLEK. Caller, are you there?
Yes, I'm, I am here. Hey, I got a question for the candidate that's running for mayor. I want to know.
Sir, this is the, not the mayor, this is the city council Ward Six position two.
Okay, well, city council also. I mean, I'm, I'm listening to all these candidates that's talking, but neither one of them are talking about the sanitation department and what they have their needs at all. It's always the police and fire department, which is great. I know they need help also, but we are, the sanitation department is getting smaller and we can't take care of this city with the equipment we have and the manpower. So what are you going to do about us?
Alright, we thank, we thank you for the call, sir. So the the question is, if you are elected to the council, what will you do to help the sanitation department? He says, there's always talk about police and fire, but very little said about sanitation. So what would you do to help sanitation if you're elected? We will start with Mr. McLean. You now have two minutes.
Alright, so one thing I want to point out, um if you look back in 2000, um sales tax that was passed, um they got rid of the sanitation fee. So the city ended up having to incur the over four million dollars uh each year, four, almost four, four and a half million dollars that we spend each year uh in order to uh fund our sanitation and in order to um operate our city. Now, one thing that I'll, I'll also point out is that the city only took in eighty-seven thousand in revenue from our, our sanitation, from our tipping fees and things of that nature. So we lose money, right? So the thing that I would say, in order for us to, to help with sanitation, number one, get with the head of, of that department and try and figure out what are some of the needs that you guys have? I know you have needs for trucks. Those trucks are expensive. I know you have needs for more people. Those things are, are all expensive, but I think we have to look at um, look at our budget and figure out what are some ways that we can reallocate or what are some things that we can do um uh in order to, to help us in that area? I, I think you guys do a great job and uh looking forward to continuing to work with uh that department.
Alright, we will now go to Mr. Hager. You now have two minutes.
Sir, I'm glad you asked that question about sanitation. Matter of fact, I was going to touch on that later in the show on my close. But for, I was talking about public safety earlier. There's actually three departments involved in public safety. There's police, fire and sanitation. And you're correct, the sanitation department gets overlooked and they don't get credit uh that they deserve for the work they do. You know, sanitation is such a very important part of our city and any other city. Most of us remember when uh New York City Sanitation Department went on strike. Uh I mean, it almost brought the city to their knees. So sanitation is very, very important. I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Alright, we thank you for your response. We are going to now go to a question from our live feed, and this question is for Mr. Hager. Teresa Beck says, this is a question for Mr. Hager. Since your quality of life issues focus on the neatness and beauty of the city, what plans do you have to take care of the blight that the personal properties cause around town? Almost fifty percent of our properties are rentals and many of the owners of the large rental properties are bad actors from out of town. There are no real codes that will focus, force them to keep the city clean. What do you propose to do? How do you plan on forcing these folks to clean up their areas? These areas contribute to the safety issues which you say are concerned. So basically to sum up what she's asking, what are you going to do about blight in the city if you are elected? Mr. Hager, you now have two minutes.
Well, I think the city's already got a plan for that. I think they've been uh if the, if the homeowner refuses to clean up the property, especially if it's a vacant property, there, there's my understanding is that they'll go in and mow it or clean it up and then they'll send a customer a bill or put a lien on their property.
We will now go to Mr. McLean and Mr. McLean, you will now have two minutes.
Yeah, so thank you for that question, Teresa. Um so yes, the city, we have a few different mechanisms. Uh what Mr. Hager was referring to was code enforcement. If uh property is not cleaned up, um then yes, we would go in, we'll clean it up and then we will um send the homeowner, property owner a bill. If that bill's not paid, then they go through a lien process. Now, one thing that, a couple of things that we've done since uh my time again on the council, uh we've number one, created the land bank, that if someone has a piece of property that they're not taking care of, they can give it to the city. The city can either go in and fix it up, or we can turn around and we can sell it. Uh the other thing is we have a boarded up ordinance that allows um someone, number one, if you have the property boarded up and you don't plan on fixing it and you're not in the process of getting things uh taken care of with that property, you've got a set amount of time before we come in and we condemn that property. Now, we've worked with homeowners, we've worked with um with, with code enforcement uh to make sure that those areas are not left uh in disrepair because they are a problem. They, they, it can create a huge problem uh for our community. Uh they could become a public safety hazard and we have to make sure that those properties um are less and less.
Alright, we thank you, Mr. McLean, for your answer. And we're going to go to our next question, which I will start with you. This is from Barry Eggers and it says, will either of you candidates vote to raise the sales tax? And Mr. McLean, we will start with you.
Um so first of all, we can't, um the state law uh doesn't allow the city council to raise the sales tax. We have to, that has to go to a vote uh to the public. So that's uh to answer that question, uh would I let the citizens decide if they are taxed? Yes, I will let the citizens decide if they are taxed or not or if their taxes go up. Um so I would, that's the way I would handle that. Uh that's the way we've handled that. And so um uh that's the answer.
And we will now go, we will now go to Mr. Hager. You now have two minutes.
Okay, uh no, I would not, I would not even recommend, I don't want any part of a new sales tax. What Mr. McLean was saying, we know that the council itself can't decide we're going to have a new sales tax, but they can recommend it to the, to get to uh for the next election. Uh I wouldn't even vote to do that.
Alright, and of course, if you are watching on our. Well, let me finish this first. We got, we're gonna get, so. Well, if I, if I give you a minute, I have to give him a minute to respond back to you. So I, I can give you a minute, but I have to give, but in terms of fairness, I have to give him a minute to respond back. So, so go, go ahead, Mr. McLean.
That's the state law that we have to, the citizens, we cannot pass taxes um on our citizens. I mean, if, if that was the case, we could pass taxes without vote, without a vote, uh we cannot. The state law requires that we have a vote.
I understand that completely. That's what I said. I know this council cannot pass a sales tax, you know, every, I mean, that's plain, that's plain. But what I'm seeing is that's how most sales tax get around to getting passed. The council get behind one like Team Jonesboro last fall that tried to cram a tax down our throats at a special election. So I'm not for increased taxes of any kind.
We're going to leave it there. Of course, and we are still taking your questions at 870-277-1080 or on our Facebook Live. So go ahead and post those questions. We'll, we'll leave the segment open for a couple more minutes so we can, okay, we do have one here. This comes from Donna Mangram and it says, Mr. McLean, when the tornado hit Jonesboro, your house was not damaged, but others were around you. What did you, you do to help your own neighbors whose house was destroyed? Did you open up your home to shelter your neighbors?
Um yeah, so I appreciate the question, Donna. Um but to be clear, my home was, um it was not a total loss like some of my neighbors. And one of the things that um I had some damage, I got it fixed and that was, that was it. Um but uh what did I do to help my neighbors? One of the things that I did um to help my neighbors was to um go around, help them clean up, uh help them uh hug them, cry with them, uh whatever it was, uh board up windows, um uh haul, haul trash, you name it. And something else that uh I did that I'm proud of is at nighttime, when, after we had people stealing, after we had people looting, uh one of the things that my neighbors and I did, we actually stuck together and we created a uh a neighborhood watch in the, at night. Um so I took time away from my family to go and protect our neighborhood and watch over our neighborhood and make sure that we were safe.
Alright, we, we will now go to Mr. Hager, who will have two minutes.
And what's the question?
The question was, Mr. McLean, when the tornado hit Jonesboro, your house was not damaged, but others were around you. What did you do to help your neighbors whose house was destroyed? Did you open up your home to shelter your neighbors? So since that was kind of sort of a personal question, I'm going to kind of change it up just a little bit. So Mr. Hager, I'm going to ask you, what did you do to help people during the tornado? And you now have two.
Really my neighborhood had got damaged. It was Mr. McLean's neighborhood, which is uh one housing area uh from me. But uh I did, I did walk around through the entire area the next morning, ask people if they need any help. It was packed. That area was packed with volunteers. I did not see Mr. McLean out there, uh but the area was packed with other people helping. And uh I off, I asked several different ones if, if I could do anything to help out and they had plenty of help at that point in time. And as far as the neighborhood watch program, the police department furnished that uh for several days right after the tornado.
Alright, we thank you for that response. We're going to now go to the, to the phone lines. Caller, are you, caller, are you there? You're on, you're live on the air?
Yes, I'm here. My name's Roger Kidd.
Okay, Roger, go ahead. What's your question?
I have a, I have a question for Councilman McLean. My question to Councilman McLean is, will he, will he or will he not support Bobby Long's resolution when it comes to the council next week?
Question is to Mr. McLean, will you support Alderman Long's resolution when it is put forth to the council? You now have two.
Uh so thank you, Roger, for the question. Something that I'll, I will say is, is I've told people before, I'll continue to do my due diligence to uh make sure, as I've done in the past, to make sure that uh this is something that uh that we'll, we should support. Um I've spoke to different business owners and um and tried to get their take and tried to understand their viewpoint on this uh resolution or what, how, how is, how are the mandates that the governor has passed or has enacted? How are they affecting them and how are they um helping them or hurting them or um what are they um seeing as a result of this? And so that's something I've always tried to do is to make sure that um I've done my due diligence and I will continue to do the same thing. I'll continue to talk to uh different leaders throughout the city as far as at the schools uh as well as uh business.
Alright, Mr. Hager, two minutes.
Same question?
Yes.
Yes, if I was on the council, I would support Bobby Long's resolution hundred percent. I don't think uh Mr. McLean even wanted to answer that question because he probably doesn't support it. But I would a hundred percent. Uh I think the governor is overreached and our city government should at least try to do something about it.
Alright, we thank you for the, for that response. Well, we got to go, we got so many, we got so many other questions. Uh well, we, we got to move on. We got so many other questions. You can, if, if you have some leftover time on your next question, then you can get to that then. This question comes from Iris Wright Stevens, says, Mr. McLean, Jonesboro has some of the lowest electric rates in the US, but CWL has announced that the power plant in Newark that we own a part of will be decommissioned by 2030. CWL has also mentioned investing in renewables, which are usually much more expensive than coal or natural gas. What is your recommendation for keeping our utility rates low to help families and attract business and industry? And you now have two minutes.
So thank you, Ms. Stevens, for the question. Um but again, as I said before on the previous question, I'll continue to do my due diligence and uh make a decision from there. Um but in order for us to uh continue to see our rates um stay low, I think we got to trust the leadership at CWL. They've done a great job um planning and making sure that our rates stay low. Uh yes, renewable energy does on the front end tend to cost a little bit more, but at the same time, you usually see some savings in the long run. Uh again, I trust the leadership there in everything they've done uh to keep our rates low. I trust that they have the vision and understanding and the know-how to um do what's best for us.
Alright, and we go to Mr. Hager, two minutes.
Okay, first of all, I don't really, I don't understand why they want to phase out the uh, the coal powered generation plant over in New York. I don't understand that because city water and light has had and does have the lowest uh utility rates that I know of anywhere in the state, maybe in the nation. I don't know. Uh where I was raised up in Tuckerman, my water and electric bill there twenty-five years ago was higher than what it is now in Jonesboro. So uh as far as the Green New Deal and the green energy, uh that's uh, you know, the liberals are push, trying to push that down our throats all across the country. And they don't care what it costs us. Uh but I do. Uh I don't, uh I think city water and light should rethink closing down that facility and uh because we're doing just fine with the low rates. I don't, I would not want higher rates and I don't know why anyone else would. Thank you.
Alright, and we thank you for that. Oh, to those of you that are calling in at 870-277-1080, when I answer the phone, I have to put you on hold to let the candidates finish answering the question and then I will get to you as soon as we get time. Don't just call and just because I don't immediately put you on the air, hang up uh because then you're going to lose your place to another call. So if you call in, just hold and I will get you on the air. We want to now go to a question from Skip Kelly and this is for Mr. McLean. He says, what was your job title when you worked in Congressman Marion Berry's office? Is that where you got your start in community service? You now have two minutes.
No, uh that was not my um start in community service. Actually, if you go back, um my family has always been in community service. Uh I have a, an uncle who was a retired judge and um uh served the community in Little Rock for a long time. Um I saw my family get out and we knocked on doors as kids. Uh we did whatever we needed to, to help my, uh my family. Um but when I worked for Congressman Berry, I was his field representative. So I went out and made connections with local elected officials, county judges, uh state reps, all that to make sure that the um, the first congressional district was served. Um whether it be through uh grants, through different projects, stimulus uh packages, those things that um made the first district better. Uh some of the project, one of the projects I'm proudest of during that time was um working on a entire water system for the uh city of Cotton Plant, Arkansas. So that's, that was my title.
Alright, we will now go to Mr. Hager for a response.
For a response. For a response of what Mr. McLean did or what?
Or you could, or you could talk about your community service if you like. Since someone asked him, what was his community, how did he start community service? You could talk about-
And I never worked for a Democratic congressman like Mr. McLean did. So I don't know what you're asking me.
Well, have you done any community service? What are some ways you have helped serve in the Jonesboro community? Or in the community as a general, what's some of your experience?
I can't hear you. Can you turn it up?
I said, what, sorry. I said, what, basically, since he, Mr. McLean was asked about his community service experience, what community service do you have in the community? What, what are some things that you have done to help the community?
I, I haven't done any community service except, uh, working, paying taxes and taking care of my family. If I get into politics and political, uh, the political field, then I will start doing it.
Thank you for that response. Let's check to see if we have any other questions. We'll see. Uh, we just have some comments, but we don't have any other questions. So with that, we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna go, so what cue? Okay, well, we'll, we'll go to Kubila with a question, then we're gonna go to our next segment.
Okay, and I'm gonna approach this delicately, delicately as possible, and this question is for both candidates.
Who's starting?
I do wanna, we wanna start with Mr. McLean. I understand that each of you have your own party affiliation. However, when you work for the city council, you work for the city as a whole, which represents a variety of people. What are some ways that you can ensure the people that you will work for all people, not just your own personal or party interest?
All right, you said Mr. McLean's gonna start that off?
Yeah.
Okay, hold, hold up, let me-
Okay, um, so thank you for the question, Kubila. Uh, but to be clear, uh, the city council race is nonpartisan and, um, one that we don't, uh, have any kind of affiliation. Um, I don't have any kind of affiliation. Um, but at the same time, um, you know, I, I think we have to, to, to make sure that, um, we work for everybody. Okay, we gotta understand the city of Jonesboro, we work for everybody. We are, um, we are not, we're not serving one party. We're not serving one group of people. We are working for the citizens of Jonesboro. I worked for citizens of Jonesboro for the last four years and will continue to do so, whether you vote for me or not. Um, I will make sure to work, uh, with each and every decision I make, uh, with that in mind. Um, I'm not working for one specific group or one person. I'm working for every citizen of Jonesboro.
Mr. Ha, Mr. Hager, you now have two minutes to respond.
Now, could you repeat the question?
The, Kubila, repeat the question.
Okay, bottom line, I know that everyone has their own personal, um, and political affiliations and their beliefs. How can you ensure the, the residents that you are going to work for them no matter your own personal political affiliation?
Okay, so basically what she's asking is, how, how can you, how, how will you ensure the voters out there that you will work for the entire city and not just represent any particular special interest group? You now have two minutes.
Okay, like I said earlier, uh, first of all, I'll have an open forum page on Facebook. I want everybody to contact me. I'll invite that. Uh, I've never seen Mr. McLean out in our neighborhood. Like I said, he's never knocked on our door. He never, I've never seen him on Facebook to contact, for him, you know. But anyway, uh, I've been in sales business for a long time, most or half of my adult life anyway. And I've dealt with all, all types of people. I've dealt with all races, all genders and all, all affiliations. And anybody that's ever dealt with me would tell you, I treat everybody the same. And I don't care if it's my brother or someone I've never met before. I treat them all the same. And that's, that's the way I'll do when I get elected to this office.
All right, and we thank you for your response. That was a very lively seg, uh, segment. And I definitely appreciate everybody who checked in on our Facebook Live feed. We're gonna get ready to go to a break and I believe our next segment is going to be just as lively because the next segment, the candidates are going to ask questions of each other. So I just do want to remind y'all, do please keep it civil. Y'all have done a great job so far, so we know that it's going to continue. Gonna get ready to go into our break, but don't go anywhere because we're having a good time and we're having a good time with you. This is our Jonesboro City Council, Ward Six, Position Two Debate on KLEK one oh two point five F M.
You're listening to Community Conversations on KLEK one oh two point five F M. We'll be right back. We're back with Money Matters. I'm Alfred Edmond Jr. Saving money is not as hard as most people think. The key is to look out for the little things you do each day instead of looking to bank a big windfall. For example, take a hard look at the money you spend on food and beverages. Cut back on those gourmet coffees. No matter how good they are, they cannot be worth ruining your finances over. You don't have to go cold turkey, but go for making it a weekly instead of a daily treat. For six days, make your own coffee at home or drink the free gourmet choice that may be available at work. You could save as much as five dollars a day or more. That's thirty dollars a week or more than fifteen hundred dollars a year. Another well-known, easy savings habit is one people resist doing, and I just don't get why. Stop eating meals out during the work week. I'm Alfred Edmond Jr. for Money Matters at A U R N dot com.
Made possible by the Jonesboro Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, focused on joy in our sisterhood, power in our voice, and service in our hearts. W W W dot Jonesboro Alumni D S T dot O R G.
Money Matters is brought to you by the guy right, Jonesboro Cappa League, a nonprofit organization that guides young men to a life of achievement. Cappa League Jonesboro on Facebook, Jonesboro underscore Cappa League on Instagram and JonesboroCappaLeague at Gmail dot com.
Money Matters is brought to you by Bancorp South, offering checking, savings, loans, credit cards, and wealth management. W W W dot Bancorp South dot com or eight seven zero nine seven two nine eight zero zero.
KLEK thanks R. Scott Trout and the Trout Law Firm, two forty-seven South Main Street in Jonesboro, for believing in our mission to educate, entertain, and empower the community with a motto of aggressive representation and quality customer service. Areas of practice include criminal law, divorce, custody, child support, real estate, wills, power of attorney, estate planning, and general practice. Details, eight seven zero nine three three seventy-one hundred or troutlawfirm dot com.
KLEK one oh two point five F M salutes small businesses. Small businesses promote local character and success, keeping money in the local economy, local jobs, entrepreneurship, community well-being, and so much more. Contact us today to learn more on how your small business could be featured on KLEK for as little as twenty-five dollars per month.
Shout out to Treasures Kids Daycare, childcare for preschool, two and a half to five years old. Five one one four East Middleton Avenue, Jonesboro, eight seven zero six two three five seven seven zero. Treasures Kids Daycare on Facebook.
Shout out to Tax Refund Firm, D B A Cool Cuts Taxes, Tax Preparation and Holiday and Refund Anticipation Loans, fourteen eleven Franklin Street, Suite Six, Jonesboro, eight seven zero five two zero seven four seven zero eight seven zero three three one eight three one one.
And now back to Community Conversations on KLEK one oh two point five F M.
And we're back on Community Conversation on KLEK one oh two point five F M. This is our Jonesboro City Council, Ward Six, Position Two Debate. We are now inside of our third segment and for this segment, as I mentioned before, the candidates will now get to ask questions of each other. The way that this will work is we'll start Mr. McLean. Mr. McLean will ask a question. Mr. Hager will have two minutes to respond. And then Mr. McLean will have two minutes to do a rebuttal and then it'll go to Mr. Hager and we'll just kind of go back and forth. We'll try to get about two or three questions, um, each total just kind of depends on how long they answer and how long, how much time we have left in this segment. So we will start with Mr. McLean. You may now ask your question to Mr. Hager.
All right, um, so I think the, the big question has to be, in order to make an informed decision about our city and about our budget and how we spend money, what are some things that you've seen in our budget? What have you looked at? And then also what would you, uh, what would you cut from our budget? And how would you have that conversation, um, with those department heads of what, what budget cuts you would make?
Did you understand the question, Mr. Hager?
I think so.
All right.
I actually pulled the budget up online and looked at it. Uh, it doesn't break it down and tell you what these expenditures is. It tells you the total price that this department is allocated and the total price over here. I'd like to see a bu, the real budget, the one that's broken down, so I can actually, I'm sure there's lots of things in there that could be cut. And that's exactly what I'll be looking at when I get elected.
Okay, okay. All right, Mr. McLean, you will now have two minutes for a-
You'll now have two minutes for a rebuttal.
I, I think it's simple. Uh, the budget is, is available online. The budget is there. The department heads are available. If we have any questions, uh, since I've been on council, we've been able to call and, and visit with those department heads. Um, and, you know, they're willing to visit with us and they're willing to talk to us and willing to look at any time, any kind of expenditure we have. Uh, it comes through, also it does come through the finance department or finance committee. Um, so we do get to look at that.
Like I said, I've got a copy of the budget. I printed it down online.
Okay.
But-
We gotta go to the question. So, Mr. Hager-
Do what?
Mr. Hager, it's now your turn to ask a question for Mr. McLean.
All right, thank you. All the candidates are talking about, asking a lot, a lot of people's asking the candidates a lot of questions about the lack of diversity in our city government and the lack of hiring minorities in our city government. My question is, why haven't you, or what will you do to fix this? And why haven't you already? Because you're the chairman of the Rules and Nominating Committee. It's in your hands, isn't it?
You got me. Here we go. All right, um, okay. So it's not in my hands. It's by myself. No, it's not in my hands. But at the same time, something I have done is to have those conversations with the mayor. We voted on a resolution to make sure that we have diversity within the, in our committees. So that came through nominating rules. Um, but then also something that we've, uh, again, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to different department heads and said, we need to be intentional about hiring. We need to be intentional about going out and recruiting minorities, not only to, uh, the, the public safety fields, but also throughout the different, um, the different opportunities that we have within the city.
And Mr. Hager, you will have two minutes for a rebuttal.
I saw that in the paper the other day. You and the mayor got together and decided you need to talk about it. But you've been in office for four years. Why haven't you done anything up to this point?
First, let me, let me say, when you do your, when you do your rebuttals, don't ask, if you're gonna ask a question, save it to the, put forward over to your next question, uh, because then the saver's just gonna get all over to it. Just respond simply to what he say. If you want to turn around and take your next question to, uh, continue on that thread, you can do so. So, uh, Mr. McLean, now I'll let you-
I'm not familiar with what he's talking about as far as what the mayor and I got together and talked about the other day. I'm not sure what he's talking about. The mayor's been, uh, dealing with, um, his own, uh, with some health issues and I think that, uh, that we should keep him in our thoughts, but I, I'm not sure what the, uh, what he's referring to.
So we will now, Kubila, it's Mr. McLean's turn now. I'm trying to push all these buttons and keep up. Okay, all right, so we will now go to Mr. McLean who will get to ask the next question for Mr. Hager.
Okay, uh, so what are some things that you would like to do and improve on within our city to help us attract? And to, number one, attract and maintain, uh, young families, uh, to the area. What are some things that you would like to see?
What I touched on earlier, which is beautifying our city and keeping it clean, roadways mowed, potholes fixed, uh, make it a more beautiful city and the, uh, investing in our community, which you had stated earlier. Uh, to me, that means raising taxes. Anytime a politician starts talking about investing in their city, they're talking about raising taxes. Anytime you talk about green space, uh, that's, you're talking about, y'all have a ordinance or a resolution. Well, it's on the books where you charge people building new houses. They have to add extra shrubbery. It's gonna cost them several hundred dollars extra. So when you talk about green spaces, you're talking about costing the taxpayers again.
Mr. McLean, you will now have two minutes to offer a rebut-
Um, so I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what you mean about new shrubbery. Now, we do have a landscaping and that's, that, but that's, that has nothing to do with a single-family home. So that has something to do with multifamily home, uh, homes. And so that's, that's what that has. And also in commercial, uh, not a res, a single-family residence. That's not, that's not what that is. Um, but one thing, uh, again, we have to have an investment, number one, as an individual, I have to make investments in certain things to get a return. Uh, did not say anything about raising taxes. Um, there are other ways to, um, to, to get investment in quality of life or in different projects without raising taxes.
Were you trying to raise other taxes last fall?
Well, you can, you, you can ask a question about that because it is now your turn to ask a question. So we're going to now go to, miss, let me get this clock. We said, we're gonna now go to Mr. Hager who will get to ask the next question of Mr.-
Okay, you said the, uh, green space did not apply to residential houses. Uh, that's not what I've heard from some of the contractors. Another thing is the, uh, you guys make the rules and regulations, there's, there's too many, uh, too many things that, that cost the contractor more money. That, if y'all could relax some of those, uh, some of those rules and regulations, uh, we could get more contractors coming. Some, I've talked to several contractors that won't build anything in Jonesboro because it's, there's too much red tape involved here. You know, if you can reduce the restrictions, reduce the red tape and-
Mr. Hager, what's the question? You're making a statement, but do you have a question tied into that?
Yes, what, what are you gonna do to reduce the restrictions where, where we can operate a little more freely here in this town?
All right, Mr. McLean, two minutes.
So I think you've done a good job of, of not being too restrictive. Um, we do have requirements that, um, that contractors have to follow, but that has made us better and I think that improves our city. Uh, in order for us to continue to be a first-class city, we have to have, uh, certain rules and regulations. And do we have too much? I think we have enough, but I think there's also times that we can work together with those contractors. There's always, uh, the Board of Zoning and Adjustments that if anyone has a concern, that they can go to them and, uh, and go in front of them and ask for a variance on certain, certain things. And so we've done that and, and we've made sure that anytime that somebody has a concern or question, that they go before them and, um, and get an adjustment.
Mr. Hager, you will have two minutes to respond.
Yeah, I know about the Board of Zoning Adjustments. I've been up to some of their meetings. But they, they shouldn't, people shouldn't have that, have to go before the Board of Adjustments, uh, Zoning Adjustments. Just open things up a little bit more. I realize there's got to be restrictions. There's gotta be rules and regulations, but not as many as this city's got.
So now we were, it's Mr. McLean's turn, right?
Um, yes.
Okay, so Mr. McLean, it is now your turn to ask a question for Mr. Hager.
Okay, uh, how much time have you spent, uh, looking at other cities, some things that they're investing in in terms of making their cities better? What are some things that you've seen, some examples, maybe of, 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 um, different projects or things of that nature that have, you've looked at to make other cities have done to make their cities improved?
Mr. Hager, you will now have two minutes to respond.
I haven't looked into their actual programs. Uh, I haven't went and talked to them, but you can drive around through, uh, a lot of the cities or, and, uh, they keep, most of them keep the roadways looking better than we do. And the, like our sidewalks over here. Uh, the city likes to build sidewalks, but they don't like to maintain them. You know, I, I say don't build anything if you can't maintain it. You're wasting the taxpayer's money when you do that.
Mr. McLean, you will now have two minutes to respond to that.
Uh, I don't have, I don't have one.
Okay, all right, so we will now go to Mr. Hager who-
We'll now go to Mr. Hager who will ask the next question. Mr. Hager, do you have a question? It's now your turn.
Not at this time, no.
Mr. McLean, do you have any more question for Mr. Hager?
Yeah, I think the next question is, how do we improve, um, on our, um, projects as far as softball, baseball, youth sports? How do we improve that to help attract, uh, families? And how do we use that to be an economic development tool? How do you, what do you see as far as that goes to help improve those things?
Yeah, I think, I, I think our sports programs are very important to improve our community. But I think we got, you already got committees set up, uh, that help, like the parks and recreation and different local groups that, that support these and, uh, our ball teams and our, it will help, uh, bring in a lot of money to the town. I agree. What was, what was the, what was the point of the question? What was the question?
I'll, I'll ask it again. How do you, how do you plan to improve on those to be used as economic development? Are youth sports?
I'd have to see all the programs the way they're laid out, but I will be real supportive of all the sports programs. I guarantee that, you know.
Mr. McLean, would you like to reply? You have two minutes.
All right, I think the. The big thing we have to understand is that, um, are youth sports can be an economic driver? Number one, to have people here in our hotels, for them to be in our restaurants, for them to be a part of our community and come in and shop and see what Jonesboro has to offer. And I think we have to make sure that we are continuing to invest in that and continuing to be a part of, and expanding our, uh, youth sports programs and, uh, having tournaments here, uh, and having opportunities for people to come see Jonesboro.
All right, we will, we will, Mr. Hager, did you have any other questions for Mr. Mc, did you have any question for Mr. McLean?
Yes, he's talking about investing again. You know, every time somebody talks about investing, to me, it means they want to raise taxes. And just not for that.
Is that, is that a question?
Yes. Is that what you want to do? Raise taxes to?
Well, that question's already been, been asked, uh, on the live feed, so we, we want to make sure we get it right.
Was a comment then.
All right, well, Mr. Mc, Mr. McLean, would you like to respond to that?
To answer that question, again, we cannot raise taxes here in Jonesboro and the city of Jonesboro without the citizen vote. Do I feel like raising taxes is the only way to get things done? No. But, um, I do think that takes investment, um, on the city side and as well as each citizen. We have to make sure that, and be willing to invest, uh, in order to, to have a return.
All right, so we're going to now go to Quibila. Quibila had a question, and then we're going to wrap up this segment right here. All right, Quibila.
Okay, so not just with city council, but with mayor, the mayor race and everyone else. We've been talking a lot about minorities, um, improving the quality of life for individuals across the city as a whole. We know that we have the Hispanic Center, which benefits those residents and provides services for them. As of now, for the minority, mainly the black community, we only have, well, we have the E. Boone Watson Center, but it's not necessarily a resource center. How do you gentlemen feel about having a centralized place? And I have a building in mind, but that's neither here nor there at the moment. How do you feel about having a centralized resource center for the minorities in this community, in this city? Mr. Hager.
All right, Mr. Hager, uh, the question is, how do you feel about a dedicated center for the minority community? Something similar to El Centro Hispanio, which is for the Hispanic community. You now have two minutes to respond.
I think that would be. I think that would be a great idea, but are you wanting to exclude, you talk about minorities. Are you wanting to exclude whites? Uh, there's a lot of whites that needs a lot of help, uh, in these activities. Are you trying to exclude them? I, I would not want to exclude any, anybody, any race, any gender, or any organization or group here.
So, uh, if I was to say, Quibila, I think the, that, that the city would need to work with, um, a nonprofit that would be willing to step up and say, this is, we'll, we'll, we want to have a community center. Um, and if that's the case, then we could do the same as we've done for the Hispanic Center and help them secure grants, um, to, to operate. Um, I would love to see us, uh, improve the E. Boone Watson Center and, and the, the small museum is there, uh, right now. Um, so I, I would absolutely be willing to help in terms of, again, through grants. Um, but then also, uh, a nonprofit that says, hey, um, we want to help specifically for, uh, a, a certain group. And that's, you know, again, that's, if that's, if that's, if they meet, um, have certain requirement or certain requirement, I don't know if that's a big deal. Maybe, maybe we should look at, uh, it being just a community center as a whole.
Quibila had a couple of words that she wanted to say, and then we're going to wrap up this segment.
To kind of clarify or round out what I was talking about, it's not about excluding a particular race or gender or anyone. However, we know that those in the minority communities face certain disparities that some others may not. And sometimes it's not at any fault of their own. Anywho, all I'm saying is having a space that provides resources that are maybe culturally, um, that, how can I say? Again, I'm trying to be delicate about this and not trying to be so.
Think your mind.
They're culturally specific. I'm just going to say that. However, included in these services, I would like to see some diversity bias, train, not training, but seminars, inclusivity discussions, whatever the case may be. However, just like there's a space for the Hispanic Centers, I would like to see, I just wanted to get your thoughts on, yes, I would like to see. But I want to get your thoughts on how would you feel about a space for minorities or even let's just say the low-income individuals.
Better now, low income. That's not necessarily minorities. Uh, low income is in all races and genders. So yes, if you want a community center for low-income people, I'd be all for that. But I'm not for pointing, uh, singling out one particular race or gender and, and building a center for them. I think it should be for all the lower-income people should be able to share that center.
Mr. McLean, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, and I, I think the city has, uh, tried to help in that regard in some, some way with City Youth. But I do think that, uh, we could probably take it a step further and maybe look at partnering with someone and have a multicultural center or something along those lines. But, uh, at the same time, um, I think we could also, um, do a, a great job partnering with, um, uh, churches, maybe to help with low-income education. How to get out of that, how to help with, um, uh, education, understanding the importance of education, maybe, uh, partnering with different schools. I think things of that nature can happen, um, and not even have to have an actual physical center, uh, if that makes sense. But, uh, that's something that I've seen happen, and I think we could definitely do.
All right, and we thank both of you for your candid answers to all of the questions and to the questions that you all post each other. That is going to wrap up this segment of the debate. Once again, I implore both of you to go back later on and look at all of the comments because you all actually beat the mayor's debate. You all, this debate is actually drawing more attention than the mayoral debate. So there you go. It's obviously a lot of interest in this race, but going to get ready to go to a break, when we come back from the break, each of these gentlemen will say something positive about the other, and we will go into our closing statements.
The voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council.
Jonesboro's Community Radio Station, your live, your music. K L E K one oh two point five FM.
Good Monday morning, Jonesboro, and happy Columbus Day. This is meteorologist Tim Root with your KLEK one to two point five forecast. On this Columbus Day, it'll be mostly sunny, temperatures around eighty, and south winds about ten, twelve miles per hour. Northwest winds tonight about ten miles per hour, mostly clear in the low fifties. Tuesday and Wednesday, dry weather, sunny weather, pleasant weather in the mid to upper seventies each afternoon. Maybe some showers coming into play by Thursday. Jonesboro, that's your KLEK one to two point five FM weather.
From Feature Story News in London, I'm Ollie Barrett. Armenia and Azerbaijan are accusing each other of fresh violations of the ceasefire brokered by Russia over the weekend. India's total of confirmed coronavirus cases has crossed the seven million mark. The nine million population of the Chinese city of Qingdao is to be COVID-19 tested over five days. And a new tiered local lockdown system will be announced later by UK Prime Minister Boris Johnson.
It's ten fifteen.
And we're back on Community Conversation on KLEK one oh two point five FM. This is our Jonesboro City Council Ward Six Position Two Debate with the incumbent David McLean and the challenger Larry Hager. This is now the section of our debate in which the candidates have to say something positive about his opponent. And we will start with, we'll start with Mr. Hager. You now have two minutes.
Yes, I understand that Mr. McLean has a very good paying job at ASU, and I'm proud of him for that. That's it.
I appreciate it. Um, not sure what my job had to do with, by pay, by job, but, um, I appreciate Mr. Hager's, uh, passion for our community and wanting to see us, um, stay, uh, fiscally responsible.
That was short and sweet. So, okay, so now we will go into closing statements, uh, since Mr. McLean, excuse me, Mr. Hager started with our opening statement. We will leave with Mr. McLean with the closing statement. You now have two minutes.
Well, I appreciate, um, your time again, Gansey, to have us on here and, um, give us the opportunity to come before you and everybody and say who we are and what we believe. One thing that I'm proud, a few things I'm proud of, um, Jonesboro's in a better place, uh, than I, what I feel than when I first started. I think that we should leave things better than when we found them, and, um, and that's something I'm proud of. When I'm elected again, I, I will truly, I will continue to work, um, and finish some of the things we've started. We've improved our infrastructure. We've improved our connectivity. We've also invested in our, uh, police and our, uh, first responders. Those are, that's something I'm proud of. You know, I'm, I'm, I've been endorsed by both the Fraternal Order of Police as well as the Firefighters Union, and I'm very thankful for that and thankful for their support. Um, so I'll continue to, um, to work with them and to, to do what we feel is best to continue to lead our city forward. Um, and that's why I'm asking for everyone's vote, um, on November third, uh, to continue, to continue the work that we've started and continue, uh, the progress that we've made.
And Mr. Hager, you, let me get this clock. You now have two minutes, closing statement.
I'm Larry Hager, and I'm running for city council, of course, of Jonesboro. I believe in God, family, liberty, and community. I love my country. I love my state, and I love my city. And I will always work as hard as I can to make our city even greater than what it is today. I would appreciate each and every one of your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hager, and thank you also to Mr. McLean. You have heard from both of these candidates. And now we are ultimately going to hear from you on Election Day, which is November third. Early voting starts October nineteenth, and of course, you can request your absentee ballot now. I believe those are due, I think they got to be postmarked by the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh, but don't wait until then. Go ahead and get it turned in, preferably dropping it back off at the county clerk's office as soon as possible. KLEK, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council, we do not endorse support or oppose either of these candidates for office or any candidate for office, but I can't stress it enough, please exercise your right to vote. Because one of these men is going to get elected, and one of these men is going to represent you. So why not have a say in which one of these gentlemen is the one that represents you? So once again, thank you to everybody that tuned in. Join us tomorrow. We're going to have Arkansas House fifty-three debate between Sean Only and John Milligan. Those will be the candidates for those race, that race, excuse me, we're going to have them on tomorrow. Then see Thursday, we will pick up with Arkansas House fifty-eight with Mr. Reginald Punti and the incumbent Representative Jack Latiman. So we're going to have debates going up all the way until Election Day. So once again, thank each and every one of you for tuning in. You guys have a great and blessed day. This is KLEK one oh two point five FM.